The zoning board of adjustment meeting is now in session. Everyone, please turn off your cell phones. And let's, um, and while the meeting's in session, staff, please read the opening statement.
The zoning board of adjustment for the city of El Paso is now in session for Monday, June 17th, 2024. This board is established under Article 211.008 of the Texas Local Government Code in Chapter 2.16 of the El Paso Municipal Code. In appropriate cases and subject to appropriate conditions and safeguards, this board is empowered to make special exceptions or grant variances to the terms of the zoning ordinance that are consistent with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance and in accordance with any applicable rules contained in the ordinance. Your application will be decided only after you have had the opportunity to present evidence before the board for its consideration. Other parties interested in your case may also be heard at this time. No consultation among board members has been held in advance regarding your case. This board does not act in an arbitrary manner. You may feel that this application of the zoning ordinance or smart code to your situation will result in a hardship to you, but this does not mean that this board has the power to grant you relief unless the facts of your case are such that the board must act upon them. You may be sure full consideration will be given to your case and following this hearing, you will be promptly notified of the board's decision.
Thank you so much. Board members, board members and staff, please introduce yourselves, starting with my right over here.
My apologies. Daniel Chavita with planning and inspections.
Jesus Quintanilla with the city attorney's office.
Luis Amora with planning and inspections.
Christine.
Heidi of addition.
Alexis Alvarez.
Justin Bass.
Martha Aguayo.
Jorge Leon.
Louis Edwards.
Fabiano Uribe.
Thank you.
Andrew Salom, planning inspections.
Jose Beltrano, planning and inspections.
Nina Rodriguez, planning and inspections.
Mirna Aguilar, planning and inspections.
Thank you. Will everyone who is giving testimony today, please stand and raise your right hand. You may, do you, please repeat this. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Thank, you may sit. Thank you. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good afternoon. There's no changes at this moment.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. If there are no changes to the agenda, ask board members for motion to approve the, to approve the agenda, please. Do I hear a motion?
We can go to the first item, Madam Chair.
Okay.
There's no changes. There's nothing to approve.
Okay. Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Well, I think there's, there's no motion. So, yeah, so let's just continue then. We can continue to item one.
Okay, please.
You okay with that?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So item one is board election, board member election. So previous chair is no longer here. She has ended her term, so now we need a new chair. Right now, Ms. Aguayo, you are the vice chair, so you're presiding, but we still need a chair, so we can just.
Yes.
If something happens to the vice chair, then we may need to get a vice chair also at this moment. So we usually open this for all of you to do motions. You know, you may consider yourselves, or you may consider another board member as the chair. So right now, we can look at the chair.
Yes. I would like to make a nomination, please. Okay. Yes, Mr. Justin Bass has graciously agreed to be chair for the zoning board of adjustments. Mr. Bass, do you approve?
I accept the nomination.
Okay. Thank you. So Mr. Bass, you're now the chair for the zoning board of adjustment, and I guess Ms. Aguayo may remain as the vice chair. Yeah, you want to switch over places?
Thank you.
Oh, I guess, can we just have a motion? To make sure everyone agrees on that.
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
I, I make a motion to nominate Justin Bass as chair for the zoning board.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, I guess we're moving on to the first case on the agenda, which is item PZBA 2400030, which is 1121 Thunderbird Drive. Staff, are you ready for your presentation?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Jose Beltrano with planning and inspections. Item number two on the agenda is for a request for special exception C rear yard setback, single-family residence for the subject property located at 1121 Thunderbird Drive. The request is to permit the encroachment of a new addition into the rear yard setback. Here we have an aerial view of the property. Subject property is located north of Mesa Street, northeast of Shadow Mountain Drive. The zoning district for the property is R2 Residential. This is a site plan that depicts the existing layout of the property. The applicant is requesting special exception C to allow for the modification of the required 33 feet rear yard setback to permit the construction of a new addition that will encroach 22 feet 3 inches in the required rear yard setback for a total encroachment area of 443 square feet, which is highlighted in red. This image shows a front view of the subject property, taken from Thunderbird Drive. Here we have a view of the rear of the yard looking east where we can see the approximate proposed addition with the encroachment area highlighted in red and the area highlighted in yellow showing the buildable area that is not encroached the rear yard setback. Here's another angle showing the proposed addition. And here we have a side view looking south showing the proposed addition with the encroachment area and buildable area along with the requested 10 feet 9 inch rear yard setback. Notices were mailed out to property owners within 300 feet on May 1st, 2024 and June 6th, 2024. The planning division received a phone call in opposition to the request, but was rescinded as a result of seeing the provided site plan. With that, staff recommends approval of the special exception request with the following condition, that the existing structure encroaching into the side setback be modified to conform with zoning requirements. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does staff have any questions, or sorry, does the board have any questions for staff?
What will be the use of this addition?
To my understanding, it's going to be a bedroom.
I do have a question as well. You said that the condition is that the existing structure be modified to meet zoning requirements. What, what is that existing structure? Can you show us that?
That's correct. Here's the structure that's, that's part of the condition, that's encroaching into the side setback.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
All right, is the applicant or representative here to speak on behalf of this case? Please step forward to the microphone and state your name, please.
My name is Henry Ordónez. I'm the owner of Ordónez Construction.
All right, nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Do you have any issues with staff's recommendation?
None at all.
You don't? Does the board have any questions for the representative?
No.
All right. I think after that, then we just need to, or does any member of the public want to speak on behalf or against this case? No? Okay. With that said, then we can take a vote. Does anyone have a motion?
Yes. I make a motion that the, yeah, I make a motion that it be approved with a condition that the staff has requested.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. I think that completes the case, then your case passes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to item three, PZBA 2433, which is, I don't know, 2112 Tremont Avenue.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Nina Rodriguez with planning and inspections. Item three on the agenda is a request for special exception B, two or more non-conforming properties for the property located at 2112 Tremont Avenue. The subject property is located north of I-10 and east of Cotton Street. The applicant is requesting special exception B to legalize the covered patio that encroaches into the required side yard setback. The zoning district for their property is R5 Residential. Here we have an image of the site plan depicting the current layout of the subject property. The applicant is requesting special exception B to legalize an existing covered patio that encroaches 4.25 feet into the west side yard setback for a total encroachment of 96 As seen on the site plan, the covered patio in question is on the right side of the site plan with the encroachment highlighted in red. It should be noted that the total square footage of the covered patio, the detached accessory dwelling unit, ADU, carport, the carport and the shed exceed the permitted amount of square footage allowed for accessory structures. Therefore, the applicant must remove the existing shed and carport in the rear yards in order to comply with the requirement. Here we have a picture of the subject property facing south along Tremont Avenue. And here we have an image of the covered patio from the front perspective with the encroaching portion of the covered patio highlighted in red. Here we have another image of the covered patio from the rear perspective with the encroaching portion of the covered patio also highlighted in red. In order to qualify for special exception B, the subject property must have two other examples on the same block that encroach just as much or more as the subject property. This image represents all the examples on that block that encroach equal to or more than what the subject property, subject property is proposing to encroach into the side yard The property at 2109 Tremont has a covered porch that encroaches five feet into the side yard setback. And the property at 21, 2126 Tremont Avenue has a structure that extends five feet into both side yard setbacks. At this point, the planning division has not received any communication or in support, has, at this point, the planning division has not received any communication and support nor in opposition to this request. And with that, staff recommends approval with condition, the exception being that the existing carport and shed must be removed from the property. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do any members of the board have questions for staff?
Yes. Is there a time limit for them to make, to remove the shed and the request the staff
Yeah, so they got to remove it before the final inspection is called to legalize the carport.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The encroachment that's coming before us, has there been any consideration or any issues with drainage onto the adjacent property?
No, that has not come up. Again, the zoning board of adjustment is only to legalize the encroachment. This does not guarantee that they're going to get permits, so should the applicant get approval today, they still have to go have their permits reviewed by our permitting team, who would review such things like that before they would be granted the permit.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add typically in these cases, our permitting division does ask for gutters so we can prevent water flow into the adjoining property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant or representative here today to speak on this case? All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Or good afternoon, sorry. All right, does any of the board members have questions for the representative? Do you understand what's being asked of you as a condition of approval of this, and do you agree?
Yes, I agree.
All right. Any other members of the public that want to speak for or against this particular item? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve as recommended by the staff.
I second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, item passes. Thank you very much. All right, on to item number four, PZBA 2436 2111 Montana Avenue.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Mirna Aguilar with planning and inspection. Item number four on the agenda is a request for special exception B, two or more non-conforming lots. A request to legalize a couple of structures that encroach into the rear yard setback for the property located at 2111 Montana Avenue. This is an aerial view of the subject property. This image shows the property being in a C4 commercial zone and the existing and surrounding zoning for the property. This image shows the site plan portraying the layout of the existing property where the existing area of encroachment or areas of encroachment are shown in red. The applicant is proposing to legalize an existing structure that extends six feet into the rear yard setback and another one that encroaches eight feet into the rear yard setback, leaving it for two feet of setback in the C4 commercial district. If approved, it will permit 322 square feet of encroachment into the rear yard setback. Because the property doesn't have a formal entrance due to the railroad tracks in the front of the property, or what would be the front of the property originally, the front of the property faces Walnut Street. This picture shows the front of the property in its existing condition. This picture was taken from Montana Avenue showing the property from the southeast side of the subject property in its existing condition. This picture shows the existing encroachment on both of them, the carport and the building. This is another angle showing it from the front side of the property, showing the eight feet on the carport encroaching into the rear yard setback and six feet on the building. This was taken from the northwest side of the property, and the encroachment is also highlighted in red. For the property to qualify for special exception B, there must be at least two other properties with the same or greater encroachment like the one of the subject property, and this image shows all non-conforming lots that qualify the existing subject property for This image shows three non-conforming properties encroaching the same distance or more into the required rear yard setback like the one of the subject property. Notices were mailed to property owners within 300 feet on May 3rd and June 6th of 2024. The planning division has not received any communication and support or opposition to the request. And with that, staff recommend approval of the exception special request B to legalize the encroachment into the rear yard setback. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Does anyone on the board have questions for staff? I, I have one question. I'm a little rusty on my zoning guidelines. It's been a while.
That's fine.
When you have an alley in the back of a property, does that affect your zoning setbacks? Because it looks like there's an alley behind this property, correct?
Right. Well, it's not behind, it's on the side.
It's on the side.
Yes, and for the zoning commercial, there's no setbacks on the side for commercial.
All right, is the applicant or representative here to speak on this case?
I'm Richard Saunders. I'm the owner of the property, and I'm here to answer any questions. They presented all the, all of my application.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here with the public who wants to speak for or against this case? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve this request.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, your case passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number five, PZBA 2439 360 Vin Rambla Drive.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. Luis Amora with planning and inspections. Item number five is a variance request for the property located at 360 Bean Rambla. This is a variance request from section 21.80.020. So the applicant is requesting a variance based on a necessary hardship due to the commercial development, abiding the interstate 10. This is a smart code zoning, which restricts dimensional standards for all signs located anywhere on the property. So basically asking for, to allow monument sign exceeding the maximum required height as well as exceeding the maximum sign area. Here we have an aerial view of the subject property. It's already developed. Again, like I said, about I-10, it's a little away from, from I-10, but it is right there. And then, as I mentioned, the zoning is a smart code. It's a little different than most conventional zoning that you may all probably be, be aware of. There's some transect, we base it, the zoning's smart code, and then there's a transect, which is T5. This is kind of call for urban center development, or it's called like that, is mostly to be an urban setting in this property. So here we have the site plan that depicts the, in red, the location of the proposed sign. This sign is going to be on the back of the property. The front is Bean Rambla, that's where it has the address, so the back is right there on the left, which obviously going farther to the left, that's where I-10 is located. So here's the proposed sign with the dimensions, so a maximum height of 50 feet, an average with, more or less with 20 feet. So here we have a table that depicts the requirements. So again, this is a smart code, it's a little different zoning. So the requirement is really a maximum height of six feet, which obviously this request is for 50 feet in height, and then the maximum sign area is 48 square feet, and this is requesting 475 square feet. Here are more picture of the proposals, is more or less what they're proposing to put there. Also, I'd like to note that this is going to be a, what we call a change, let me remember Well, I'll get back to it. So we basically call it for short CDM signs, basically it's a screen, right, on LCD, and it shows a message on it. Again, on our picture of the proposal, again, this is on the back of that property. Again, another picture of the proposal, again, this is on the back of that property, fronting on I-10. So here's the analysis and we review for the purpose of the sign code for smart code. So in short, the purpose of the requirements or, yeah, requirements aligning in this section are to allow free speech, right? Protect the general welfare of the community based on signs, whatever they may create on the community, impose on the community, reduce visual clutter with potential, that are potential to be harmful to property values, you know, we may not want that many signs or may not look good. Protect properties from impacts of excessive signage. Again, there may be too many. Also protect transportation network by reducing distractions, right? And finally, to preserve areas of historical architectural and scenic value. So that's the purpose of these requirements, why we have a requirement for signage. So we have, we looked at that and obviously we always try to find a balance between all those, well, the purpose of this. So a little more about the smart code zoning districts, again, it's not your conventional zoning, it's a little different. So they are created to provide a walkable and dense neighborhood with a sense of place, you know, it's typically like downtown, everything's together, you're supposed to walk, see everything. It's not the same as a major thoroughfare where you have all this signage because really it's catered mostly to vehicles, right? So these standards are created to reinforce that sense of place for the smart code districts. So it's a little different from the conventional zoning. So I think it's good to know that, you know, the location of this proposed sign is really away from all these areas that are walkable. Again, it's about in I-10 or is proposed to be adjacent to I-10 is really not a place to be walking as we saw on the site plan and aerials. So we looked at this. So now we start comparing to other requirements and the closest it gets to is the requirements under the C4 commercial zoning district for super regional shopping centers where that's what I was looking for, changeable electronic variable message or CVM sign. So that's the one that most closely matches to what this is being proposed. You know, they usually permitted on properties that are at least 40 or more acres in size and it's a big shopping center. This property is really can be treated as a shopping center, it's a full development. Typically, the owner owns all the rights for all the properties and there's multiple businesses in there. So we can look at this development that way. They are, again, the ones on C4, they're typically adjacent to interstates, right? Well, I guess we only have one interstate 10. Well, this one abouts interstate 10, right? Typical, the requirements are max height of 45 feet and a max sign area of 600 square feet and we'll go see more over here. Well, I guess there. So again, I have this same example as earlier, we have the requirements on the top. Obviously, they differ a lot, it's a big difference, but when you compare it to a super regional shopping center, it's not that far off. So the max height is 45 feet and again, this is some regular zoning, C4, and this is just for to compare. They are requesting 50 feet in height, it's five feet extra. And then the max sign area, it really falls under the requirement for super regional shopping centers. And then I'll go back to this picture. So this picture shows kind of elevation points per Google Earth as well as the distance that this proposed sign is going to be away from interstate 10. Again, typically development will have their sign right there. Typical requirement is a 15-foot setback, 1'5", so you know, typically they are right there on the street. This property is 179 feet away from interstate 10. And then on the elevations is really there's some points on the interstate that are higher, some points are lower, but there's some special circumstances on I-10 that kind of, I guess we'll go through the pictures and you'll see those. So we think that part of it is, it is too far where as, again, comparing to C4 properties, signs can be located right there at the interstate. This is far away. So again, this is just going five feet over the max height for the C4, right? So this is the picture for the subject property, this is the front along Bean Rambla. So this is kind of more or less an approximation what it would look like, where it's located. These pictures come from street view, I'm not going to take pictures on the freeway, right? So they may be a little outdated. And really, I cannot, we cannot know exactly how big it is, so it's an approximation, right? So it's right there in front of the, on I-10, in front of the property. This is from the other side of the freeway, right, this is traveling east, the other one was traveling west. So there's obviously a difference because you have to, it is wide, right? The next picture, this is traveling west on I-10, obviously closer to the development, so it's kind of more or less what it would look like going that route and then I think there's a close up right there, more or less. And this is from the other side, now you're traveling east on I-10, right? So the freeway, the road kind of, it's at a slope because it's churning, kind of slopes down on the, well, I guess on the right on this side. So the left lane going west is basically, is typically higher raised than this one. So it creates a little, you know, block visibility, this is getting closer to that proposed sign. So we did send notices to all property owners within 300 feet as required on May 2nd and June 5th of this year. At this point, we have not received any communication, support or opposition to this request. And with this, staff does recommend approval of the variance request, we think it is kind of a hardship. And with this, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you, Luis. Members of the board, does anyone have questions for staff?
I do. I do. I understand this is the smart code and Richard owns the, Richard's the owner, blah, blah, blah. But my question is, what about if shops of Solano wanted to do the same thing, being that they're not in a smart code community?
Yeah, so for them, they, and I would believe if they meet the same standards as I'm comparing it to, to the C4, I don't know exactly the zoning, it may be the same zoning, but we, those standards will apply, which is maximum height of 45 feet and then the sign area of 600 square feet. It just depends, but it is a little different, right? But they have, obviously, they're allowed to, whatever the code allows currently right now, they are allowed to do it because it is basically the regular zoning. Right now, we're looking at kind of special circumstances, different zoning districts that we are usually, we usually bring to you, to the board.
I understand, I'm just saying that, again, being that it's a smart code and it's the first time, I mean, I don't foresee a problem, all I'm asking is if somebody, another community or another business wanted to do the same thing, would we, again, if they meet the qualifications, specifications and everything, would we allow it?
Yeah, so if they meet all the requirements under the code, then they can go ahead and do it, they don't need any special approval. Right now, we're looking at it because it is going over the maximum that's required already, which like I said, it's six feet height and 48 square feet, I believe, in sign area. So it's obviously going above that and they need, they're requesting a variance in this instance. If we see something else like a smart code trying to go through this, well, I guess I'd like to remind the board that this is special request, right? Variance, we don't see them that often, there are special circumstances, we evaluate those circumstances and then provide recommendation. You know, maybe other development may not be the same as this, may not need it or may request it, but may, well, we may, it depends on what we find, right?
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Luis. You said this sign, is this sign to advertise for all businesses along that area or is it specific to this one little property?
So this sign will apply and I will leave that to the representative of the owner. But super regional shopping center signs are to advertise what's in that shopping center. So this will be open to all the businesses in that area. Yeah, because that's basically what it is.
Is there any provision for additional signs along that area, like spacing requirements or is it again on a case-by-case basis because it's smart code here?
It's hard to say, this is a special circumstance, typically, and again, we're comparing to the C4, the super regional shopping center signs, they are typically, they're only allowed two per property for the shopping center. That doesn't mean they kind of have other signs and I don't really, not really remember what those requirements look like for other signs. But at least those big ones, in their regular requirements, they're allowed only up to two and that's it. This one's a special circumstance, so this is only one we're looking at, we're not looking at anything else unless, you know, they come back with another request like this and then we'll have to evaluate that.
I have a question. How large is this building and how many tenants or users will it house?
So I'm not entirely sure about the building, but I'd like to remind you all, remind the board, this is for the entire development and I don't know if you're all familiar with Montecillo?
Yes.
So it's basically all that development, it's not just for this property. It's just that this proposed sign or this sign is proposed to be placed on only one property, but it's supposed to be for the entire area. I don't know how many businesses there may be. But it will apply to all of them.
Okay, thanks.
May I follow up on Mr. Bass's question? So the, are the restrictions that are unique to the C4 zone, super regional shopping center signs, those larger ones, the things like not advertising outside products and services, services that are not offered in the property, are those going to apply to this sign as well? So we were just zoning it as if it were in C, allowing it as if it were in C4 with some height restrictions? Or are we actually just saying everything is identical to the smart zone area and those extra restrictions do not apply? So they could advertise outside services if they wanted to, for instance?
So I think one thing to clarify is that we have different, we have different types of signs. We had the billboards, that's something separate, those are basically off-site signs, right, where you advertise something else somewhere else in the city. Those are, there are provisions for those, if that's the case, they have to comply with those provisions for billboard signs. And typically, we don't allow any more new ones. So technically, on this one, it will have to comply with only the advertising for that development and that's it, cannot advertise for anything outside of the development. I don't know if that answers the question. Now the board may, I would just like to remind you that the board may impose any, any extra conditions, you may all, the board may see fit. We can, it's possible to focus on, you know, stating that if, leading that way to say, you know, all those requirements for this shopping center, supervisional shopping center requirements apply to this, they should apply. And then, just to add a little more, they will need that permit, so during the permitting process, we'll review all those things that they comply with the requirements.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
All right, how about this, how about, do we have a representative or applicant here who can speak on this case?
I don't think we have him here today. And I don't see anyone online.
Do we have anyone from the public who wants to speak for or against this case? All right. Then I'll entertain a motion.
It is hard for me.
I think it's usually better if we have an applicant here to ask questions, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, one possibility is to postpone if you would like to have the applicant here.
Yes.
We may try to reach out if needed right now.
Excuse me, could we get a design of how it'll look? And are there any examples of any other communities that have something like this? I mean, this being so new to El Paso, I mean, I would like to see what it would look like.
Yeah, I worry about like the visual clutter.
Exactly, exactly.
And the quality of the construction.
Yeah, so.
Can I?
Especially it being so prominent on I-10.
Yeah.
The fountain?
But it's different, though.
Is it?
Yeah. I mean, excuse me, the fountains, I mean, it's a billboard, okay, this is not a billboard. This is something new to El Paso, that's why I'm reluctant to approve myself because I would like to see what it would look like and again, the visuals, since it is a high-traffic area.
So I'll just like to, it's really not new, we have requirements for them. To answer your question, I don't have examples, right, right now. They are, they are allowed already throughout the city, it just depends how they look like, right? They don't necessarily look the same, they have, they can play with, within those standards. We have a maximum height, maximum sign face, and they can play with, within those. You know, it may look wider, I'm not entirely sure, so just for you all to take that into consideration. And then again, this is special circumstance. We are looking for a variance for allowing the height and the sign area. And basically, that's what we're looking at it right now as a request.
Let me ask.
They're not that LED, they're not that LED signage is what you're saying, is what you have in El Paso.
It is, and we do allow them, those, you know, the screens, that's why it is a screen that will have a message change or an app, whatever the owner puts in there. So this is one of those, again, they are already allowed throughout the city, whether we see them that often or not, that's separate, but they're allowed.
Is what Martha was asking, do we have anything at that size here in El Paso?
I don't think so.
Again, I'm not aware, but we have those standards, right? Maximum height for other signs is 45 feet, this is going five extra feet, which I think the applicant thinks is, you know, because of the topography of the property, the freeway, the, how far they are from the freeway, merits an increasing height, the sign area, it's already, and again, we're comparing to a different zoning district because the requirement is really small in this area for this zoning. But looking into the type of development, comparing it to similar development with a similar frontage along I-10 or the interstate, those are the requirements and it's not that far off from those, but at the end, it's up to the board, right?
We don't get sign variances very often, so what are the parameters that the board can look at on those signs? Maybe that's a better question. Or is that for another time?
I can answer variance questions more generally, not specific to signs, but the code gives some guidance about how to consider a variance and I have the code here, I can just read it. It says you can authorize or may authorize in specific cases a variance from the terms of the zoning ordinance or a smart code if the variance is not contrary to the public interest. And due to special conditions, a literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship and so that the spirit of the ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. That's more or less the general guidance about how to go about considering a variance as opposed to a special exception like you guys get more often.
And I did notice we notified within 300 feet, I believe.
Correct.
All those properties are owned by the same entity, is that? Okay.
Correct.
It's a monopoly.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, if someone has a motion, it sounds like we want to postpone. If someone has a motion, it sounds like we want to postpone, but I'll let someone make that motion.
I do. Because I think someone should be here to represent them. I live on the west side, and that's a very large sign. And it would be very close to the highway. Plus, does it have to be LED? Could it be just something like the fountains? It's gonna be, and the highway eventually, if they would expand, that sign's gonna be very close to the highway eventually. Tech dot would want to expand. Because we know that they're making adjustments to the highway. And on the west side, they're going to expand eventually. Yes.
All right, we have a motion?
Well, I just have a dissenting opinion. I mean, if this was signs on Vin Ramblin Road, I think that would go against the intent of the smart code, trying to encourage a pedestrian environment. But this is on the opposite side, on a highway, which I don't think really have any jurisdiction. That's what Tech Dot has about signage. And the fact that, you know, it is 180 feet or 189 feet away from the road. But I'll take its unique precedence.
All right. So we do have an open motion to postpone our table? I don't know which language to use on that. Is this a postponement or a table? Is it just postponement, table?
You can motion to postpone, that's fine.
Okay, motion, we have a motion, we have a motion postponed? Do we have a second?
Second.
Just to, a little, just quickly to add there. We can just be specific about postponement. So we can postpone to the next meeting, regular meeting.
Motion to the next scheduled meeting?
Yes.
And, excuse me, and can you provide us, or can they provide us more information on the sign? And also, Luis, I believe that I-10 will have an exit right there, right? Yeah, so that's why, how far will it be? Because people are exiting.
Yeah, so we are aware, I think a lot of people is aware that Tech Dot has plans to have a frontage road. I don't, I don't think we, I don't think they even know. I think they're really in the preliminary, may not even have gotten to the design yet. Just through the funding, maybe. So they may not even know exactly where that's gonna go, how close it's going to this development. But we can try to, if there's any information.
Okay. So we have a motion to postpone and seconded. Be very clear on your vote, so we know for sure. Do, well, do we have a motion to postpone? Everyone vote, sorry, let me say that. All in favor of postponing to the next meeting?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
Oppose.
Okay, we can just have a roll call, just for the record.
Christine Lovridge, aye.
Hi, do you have addition? Aye.
Alexis Alvariz, aye.
Martha Guayo, aye.
Justin Bass, aye.
Jorge Leon, aye.
Louis Edwards, opposed.
Fabian Uribe, aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, we are postponed to the next meeting.
Yes.
All right, now we have item six. Sorry about that. Item six, PZBA 2440, which is 5005 Meadowlark Drive.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commish. Chair members of the board, Andrew Salom with Planning Inspections. Item number six on the agenda is a request for special exception B. It's two or more nonconforming lots. And this is for property located at 5005 Meadowlark Drive. Special exception B request is to permit for a proposed addition to existing single-family dwelling that encroaches in the R1 Zone District. The subject property is located south of Country Club Road and east of Vista del Monte Street. And the property is shown here on the aerial. Again, zoning district for the subject property is R1 Residential. The site plan does depict the layout of the proposed addition on the side yard setback, and that is highlighted in red. The proposed addition structure does encroach 652 square feet. And that is 16 feet, two inches into the required 24 feet, two-inch side yard setback. The subject property is seen from Meadowlark Drive. In this photo, you see the encroachment. Where the encroachment is situated on the side yard that is highlighted in red. This is aerial showing, aerial photograph does indicate at least two properties on the same block that also contain structures that are located on the side yard setbacks that also encroach in the respective side yard setbacks. And that are properties at 5061 Meadowlark and 5020 Vista del Monte. Based on the aerial imagery, both properties' side yard setbacks are seven feet and eight feet respectively. The community's side yard setback is 23 feet. And that has been the same configuration. Public notices were mailed out on May 1st of 2024 and June 5th of 2024 within 300 feet of the subject property. And Plan Division has not received any responses in support or opposition, but staff did receive one phone call of inquiry. Staff does recommend approval as special exception B, and the encroachment is less than the encroachments in the other two properties. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Does the board have any questions for staff?
No, sir.
All right, is there an applicant or representative present to speak on this case? Come forward and just tell us your name, please.
My name is Jonathan Prieto, and I am the contractor on this project.
And do you agree with all of staff's comments?
Yes.
All right. Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
No, sir.
All right, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion. Or sorry, is there anyone in the public who wants to speak for or against this case? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll second that.
So why, you can just please restate the motion, because it was muted.
Oh.
There you go.
Yes, I make a motion to accept, to approve the special exception request as requested encroachment as the staff has recommended.
And I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, your case passes.
Thank you.
Item number seven, PZBA 2442, 1740 Allen Shepherd Lane.
Hi, Andrew Salom with Planning Inspections. Item number seven on the agenda is special exception request for the property located at 1740 Allen Shepherd. The applicant is seeking special exception B, two or more nonconforming lots, to allow to legalize the existing storage shed addition into their, into their required five-foot yard side, side yard setback. The storage shed is being considered as a home addition. This is an aerial view of the subject property highlighted in yellow. The property is located south of Mountwood Drive and east of George Dieter Drive. The zoning department, I'm sorry, the zoning district for the property is R3A Residential. The site plan depicts the layout of the existing property and the existing encroachment of the storage shed addition on the side, which is shown highlighted in red. The existing home extends three feet into the required five-foot setback for a total of 14.97 square feet. The front view of the subject property from Allen Shepherd. Here's a side view of the existing structure with three feet of encroachment into the five-foot side yard setback shown in red. Aerial photographs indicate there are two other properties on the same block that also contain structures located along the side yards that encroach into their respective side yard setbacks. We have 1784 Allen Shepherd. And shown in red is the house that is encroaching all the way into the required five-foot side yard setback. Also, we have 1718 Leroy Bonds. And shown in red is the house that is encroaching all the way into the required five-foot side yard setback. Public notice was sent out on May 1st, 2024, and June 5th, 2024 to all property owners within 300 feet of their subject property. At this point, staff has not received any communication, support, or opposition to the special exception request. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the special exception request as the existing encroachments are less than the encroachments into that setback already present on at least two other neighboring properties. The condition is the following. Storage shed shall be removed from the five-foot utility easement area, or easement will be vacated. And this concludes my presentation, thank you.
All right, thank you. Does the board have any questions for staff?
No, sir.
I do, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit confused. Are we relocating the shed, the existing shed?
No, it's gonna be, it's this, the shed is gonna stay as is. The request is to keep it in that area. The shed is considered as an additional unit to the house. Because of the five-foot, it's less than five feet between the house and the shed, so.
So it's being relocated, shifted?
Well, the reason is that the structure is encroaching on the utility easement. And so it has to be moved, or the easement will be vacated. So either way.
Thank you.
And then Lisa Mora for the record with Planning Inspection. Just to clarify, so we don't allow the structures over easements, right? And the shed is obviously, a portion of it is over that easement. So the recommendation, the condition is, okay, well, you have a couple of options. One of them is modify it or move it away from that easement. Or the other option, and I think the board, maybe not all of you, but most of you may have seen before this condition, where the easement can be what we call vacated, which is basically removed from the property, so it's no longer there. So that's another option that the owner has. So he may be able to go through that process, get rid of that easement, so it's no longer imposed on the property. And at that point, it may remain as it is. And that's what the condition is calling, either move it, modify it, or remove that easement, so it's not an issue for it.
The easement? The easement?
Yeah, so, correct. So it's a utility easement, so authority remains on city council. Yeah, if I'm not wrong, city council is the one that decides at the end. Trying to make sure that, there may be another, another option. Typically, it depends how the easement was created, or what we call dedicated. Like who said there's going to be an easement. Sometimes it's private. So the private entities, they do their own stuff. But sometimes it's public, that meaning they, someone dedicates it to the city as for city utilities and that purpose. If that's the case, typically, it has to go through city council because they are the ones with the authority to decide on city matters.
This seems like a underground, it says an underground utility. So it's, and based on the aerial of showing the park to the north, it looks like it's probably a drainage pipe underneath that, the utility easement. But I understand that the removal of that require it being recorded and approved, approved and recorded in the county, right? Showing that, that letter of approval.
Correct. So once it goes through the process, if it gets approved, it gets recorded with the county. That's kind of to make it formal and for everyone to know.
All right, any other questions for staff? If not, do we have the applicant here to speak on behalf of the case?
Unfortunately, when I moved in, it was COVID, okay? Do we all remember what happened during COVID? Nobody was working in the city. I couldn't even get into the one-stop, there was nobody working. So when I moved in, I put the shed there, because that was the most viable spot. There's pecan trees in the backyard, I was gonna pull those out of the yard. There was a shed existing on the right-hand side of the house, which I removed because the city requested that I either keep one or the other. I did that. And I also checked on that easement. There is absolutely nothing in the ground there. There's no electrics, there's no water, there's no sewage, there's nothing there. So I went through all those motions, and I made sure that Andrew had the copies of all that paperwork. So what I'm asking the city is, is after COVID came on, and two years later, everybody comes back to work, we run into a situation where, in fact, I got the notice when I moved in the house that there was a problem just with the fence. They weren't saying anything about the shed at that point. And it wasn't until after the fact that I found out, well, the shed was not in compliance. Therefore, the gentleman that wrote me up told me what to do. I went through all those motions, got everything cleared. Now it's up to you folks to just do whatever it is you're gonna do. However, the shed is concreted to the ground, it's never gonna move. So if you all want it to move, probably have to figure out a way to get that done. Thanks for your time.
Does staff have any questions for the applicant? Is there anyone from the public to speak for or against this case? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to legalize the existing storage with the exceptions that you all are talking about.
Let's clarify those exceptions to make sure they understand. Are you talking about what's on the staff?
Sorry, I guess the conditions that were, if it can't be, if you can't get rid of the easement, then you're gonna have to shift it.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the case passes with the exceptions as stated by staff in the staff report. Staff, do you want to get with the applicant, so he understands? All right, now item number eight, which is PZBA 2448, 2900 Pershing Drive.
Hello, Andrew, Andrew Salom with Planning Inspections. Item number eight on the agenda is special exception request for the property located at 2900 Pershing Drive. The applicant is seeking special exception B, two or more nonconforming lots, to permit construction of a proposed second-floor addition to the existing structure. This is an aerial view of the subject property highlighted in yellow. The property is located south of Pershing Drive and east of Piedra Street. The zoning district for the property is C4 Commercial. The site plan depicts the layout of the existing property and the encroachment of the proposed second-floor addition on the rear and side street, which are shown highlighted in red. The new addition extends all the way into the required rear setback for a total of 248.33 square feet of total encroachment. Additionally, the addition extends all the way into the required side street yard setback for 496.77 square feet of total encroachment. The front view of the subject property is seen from Pershing Drive. Here's the rear view of the existing structure with the 10 feet of encroachment into the 10-foot rear yard setback as shown in red. And also, this. And also the side street view of the existing structure with the ten feet of encroachment into the ten-foot side street yard setback as shown in red. Aerial photographs indicate that there are four other properties on the same block that also contain structures located along the rear and side street yards that encroach into their perspect, their respective rear and side street yard setbacks. We have two nine oh five and two nine two eight Pershing. Yes, two nine zero five and two nine two eight Pershing as shown in red, and there are the structures that are encroaching all the way into the required ten-foot rear yard setbacks. Also, we have two nine three one Pershing Drive and two nine two nine Montana Avenue shown in red are the structures that are encroaching all the way into the required ten-foot side street yard setback. Public notice was sent on June sixth twenty twenty four to all property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property. At this point, staff has not received any communication and support or against the, the special exception request. Staff recommends approval of the special exception request as requested encroachment is less than or equal to the encroachments into the setback already present on at least four other neighboring properties. And that concludes my presentation, thank you.
All right, board, any questions for staff?
No, sir.
Yes, has the owner stated what the, you're gonna use a second for?
Yes, it's gonna be an office space.
Okay, and my second question is to, just generally to staff, is that there are power poles along Pejus really close to the building, and I understand that typically for power poles, there is a five by fifteen aerial easement, typically an extra five feet beyond the easement, fifteen feet up. Who, does a city permitting office review that, that aerial easement, or where does it fall?
I'll go ahead and speak to that. My name's Leonardo Flores, I'm with Planning and Inspections under Plan Review. I'm filling in for Chavita right now. Typically, the electrical plans examiner will look at those types of items and if there's any setback requirements or separations that are required, they will be applied at Plan Review.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question, looking back at the photos, it said the first floor had already been approved as a legal nonconformity, so I guess that legal nonconformity only applies to what was built at that time, and now that they're adding to it, they're having to re-legalize it as a legal nonconformity, is that?
Well, so because the current structure has been there since nineteen, since the nineteen eighties with a permit from before, they are able to keep it that way, so because this is a new structure, yes, it requires a ZBA for a new additional unit for a second floor because it encroaches on the site and rear setbacks.
Okay, and the other properties we were shown with that same condition, those have a second floor as well, or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So Luisa Mora with Planning Inspection, just to clarify that, so there are some provision as to when properties are registered as legal nonconformings. Those provisions do not allow them to expand the, the size. So typically, you know, going up doesn't increase in the square footage as well, so that's where, you know, they're not allowed. So if they, they do it, then they lose that registration, so in this instance, that's what they want to do and the only option they have to avoid losing that registration for, for that one is to go through the son of war adjustment and allowing the, the setback encroachment. And this will be only for, for that story, obviously.
All right, any other questions for staff? Do we have the applicant present to speak on the case?
Good afternoon, board members, my name is Bruno Vazquez, I am the owner's representative.
All right, does the board have any questions for the applicant? No, do we have any members of the public to speak for or against this case? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Okay, I'll move to approve.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the case passes.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to approval of the minutes, item nine. Do I have a motion for that?
Worth a go, I make a motion to approve the minutes as we are.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the minutes passes.
Before we continue with, well, it's adjournment, I'd like to say something to everyone here today. One of the things is we have a couple of news, sad news. We have one staff that will be leaving us, or at least our department, so you all, the board won't see her anymore, so that's Nina Rodriguez. She's been with us for, I don't know how long, it's been an eternity, it seems like, three years? Like about three years. She's been, ever since helping with the son of war adjustment with cases, so now you won't get to see her anymore, probably around, maybe, but, so that's, that's one thing, so. The other ones are, and I know we start, talk about it when, before we started this meeting today, is that we've lost some members, obviously. We have, and I wasn't here in the last meeting, but I think you're all aware that Mr. Rea Adato left. He got replaced by another member, not here, so she wasn't able to be here, but that's one. The other one is also Ms. Linda Troncoso, also, you know, she also is not gonna be here anymore, she also, we got a new appointment that replaced her, Mr. Rea, Adato, and Linda Troncoso, they have been serving the son of war adjustment for a really long time. I think when I started here, they were already sitting in those seats. They have been holding their, their, their share for a while, you know, their, their terms expire a long time ago, so that's another thing, just to make sure everyone's aware of that. And then with that, obviously, it comes that we have new members, and I think last time we had a new member that was present, and I think you all say hi to her, and I can't remember her name, I feel horrible about it, well, actually, let me get it, just, just say hi.
I think it was Audrey. Audrey?
Audrey Gutierrez, so she was new last, last meeting, like two months ago now, in May. Wanna say something?
I have a question, again, we talked about her, she's up for about two years.
Yes.
You know what, guys, I'm sorry, Jesus City Attorney's Office. I like, how do I phrase it? This isn't really on the agenda, so we wouldn't probably be able to talk about it. I was trying to figure out how long I might be able to let it go, but I think I probably have to cut it off now.
Yeah.
Just for open meetings act purposes.
Yeah, we can discuss privately, but yeah. So we had one appointment last time, and then just to, we have two new members, right now we have one, which is Ms. Lovridge, right, Christine Lovridge, so you all obviously saw her, I mean, gone to the meeting, she's here, so she's new, and then we have another one that couldn't make it today. Well, she has been appointed, she needs to go through some onboarding and training, so you'll see more people, and I think I'll just skip it at that. So we have some sad news and some good news with new members that will be joining, or have joined, but not necessarily here right now. And that, that's it, before he jumps again, yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll, I'll reach out through email and we'll continue that way, or we can have a meeting also in person in my office if needed.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second?
All right, we have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, this meeting is now adjourned.
Okay, so what happens with this one, do we postpone? But, okay, so what other?